You know, I mean, the sixties. They put us for.
Well, and I didn't realize this.
So like, let's say this is the highway. This is downtown. Zoo and a bunch of neighborhoods are over here. They cut them off and just destroyed. And they, they have stories where like, you know, business people would, you know, for their money.
So does Mike still sick? I guess Mike is still sick.
Just kill the ambiance of town. But then it also led to a recession. There should have been a whole bunch of everything. They routed everything over to MLK. And planted grass. So it's really funny. It looks like a one lane. It's just so they can access stuff. Right up, they've had like a jam.
Oh, okay.
I don't know what that was.
No, I'm picking up her.
Shoot, it was funny how that went down. Don't worry about it. It was, you started it.
I'd like to call.
All right, I will call tonight's meeting to order. The January tenth, uh, meeting of the Oxford Planning Commission. We will start with an approval of the agenda. Mr. Dana? Ms. Blackmore with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none. Our next order of business is an executive session for the purpose of discussing the selection of chair, vice chair, and commission representation. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
You have it.
Mr. Dana?
Second.
Ms. Blackmore with the second. All those in favor?
I agree.
Need a roll call.
We'll do a roll call. Mr. Perry, would you call the roll, please?
Uh, Mr. Petherich?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Dana?
Yes.
Ms. Blackmore?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
And we are in executive session. It's like seven oh three. We will be back as soon as possible.
Go ahead. They know that, but go ahead. It's not gonna hurt.
Just make sure you stay up. Costs two forty. And five hours. Well, if they run, uh, three classes. And all the summer loans. But, um, three, seven, five. Something's allowed. Twenty minutes. Five minutes. Back to all in my mind. That's all. Early Florida. In this. Absolutely. Worried by. What's a? It's embarrassing. Those were other areas. I suspect. Bill, I was. It's like for a lot. Fast. We're going on. That's a great. Years. He just said fifteen months, sixteen years. We heard something about laser change. He got this. I haven't even had a study. Boy, is it. Something. It's a condition. It's a. It's a bad topic. We got very. I don't know. We have. So you gotta make attention to that. There's some. Physical. We need to. There's a. Community. And we. Well, we moved back. You said, well, you could. It mattered, it didn't have much to do with it, but it did. But yeah. Yes, sir. Six minutes.
Now.
Six minutes. Maybe so.
We'll make up the. I think so. I think both can be true.
All right, uh, we will take a voice vote, uh, to come out of executive session. So do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dana? Gonna get Ms. Blackmore up the second.
Text will fly later.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
All right. Onto our next business item, which is item four, election of officers and commission appointments. Can I have a motion?
You have it.
All right, your motion?
Second.
Accept the current arrangement of, of those who are installed in their various positions.
All right.
So I don't know if you consider a friendly amendment. Amendment, I was looking to see that we don't currently have an explicit representative to the Climate Action Steering Committee. So, but Jason's on, on, we're on both. So if we consider a friendly amendment, I'm happy to serve as the representative of Climate Action Steering Committee.
I agree to that.
Okay. Perfect. Um, do we need a roll call or is a voice vote okay?
Voice vote is okay.
All right. Uh, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Thank you. Uh, next item, approval of the minutes from the December thirteen, twenty twenty-two meeting. Uh, are there any additions, changes, or corrections to the minutes? All right, seeing none, I'll accept a motion to accept. So Dr. Petherich and Mr. Dana with the second. Uh, just the record reflect that, uh, Mr. Brackett is abstaining. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, motion passes. Uh, at this time, we'll entertain public comment from, uh, well, comments from the public, sorry, uh, for items that are not on the agenda. So if you would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda, feel free to come up to the podium, introduce yourself, and state your address. Seeing no movement from the crowd, we will assume that all are well with that part of the agenda. Uh, onto reports from commissions, boards, committees, and staff. We'll start with Mr. Dana. Any report?
My report is, as I said in executive session, that the members of the CIC read ably by Seth Kruppenbaker are advancing an array of economic tools, uh, that will benefit the city of Oxford, such as placemaking, such as the Elm Street project. And we are the beneficiary of that. He has one item which intrigues me, which has to do with forgiveness of the loans. I don't quite see how that is used as an economic tool, but I'm seeking an answer to that. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rosenberg?
Housing Advisory Commission did not take place in December.
Perfect. Ms. Blackmore?
Um, our transportation, Oxford Parking and Transportation Advisory Board met on Monday, and we talked a little bit about, um, the, the tasks and the mission of our group and how frequently we should be meeting. And I think the conclusion that we came to is that we have a fair amount on our plate, um, between just trying to advise on parking, trying to advise on, um, you know, future direction for transportation, circulation, master plan. Um, and so I think we anticipate meeting every other month, uh, in the year to come, and that we see, uh, that there will be opportunities to try to, once again, move transportation for all modes up in terms of how we think about it, so that we're thinking about it proactively rather than reactively.
Perfect. Thank you. Dr. Petherich?
Um, so the Climate Action Steering Committee didn't meet in December, although we will be meeting in January to kind of pull together a climate action plan, which will be kind of a thematic sub-plan after the comprehensive plan. I would report from council, though, when we're approaching second reading on the comprehensive plan, I anticipate approval. So I guess I would also ask, you know, a question. We, the council will also be meeting to set priorities on Friday, December twentieth in a re, January twentieth in a retreat. Mr. Chair or Sam, like, are there thoughts on how boards and commissions, will we be having any kind of, like, goal, goal setting? We talked before about the top, the top-down and the bottom-up. Is there visioning that we would have a meeting? You know, maybe it's a question for tonight or for the future, how the planning commission can help in that top-down and bottom-up process?
We don't have one scheduled right now.
Yeah, I think our intent in December, or maybe it was November, was maybe this meeting or the next one, if we had no agenda items, we were gonna do it then. So.
I'll, I'll work with.
So that might be nice, once the city council has set kind of the overall priorities. I mean, I, I know as a councillor, I really welcome the bottom-up ideas too. So if we can figure out how to combine and coordinate a comprehensive plan, that'd be great.
Thanks for the reminder on that one.
Mr. Bracken?
Terminal Commission. Um, so we continue to move forward on, um, pollinator gardens, native lawns, uh, for both the city properties and also individual, uh, owners across the city.
Perfect. Um, historic architecture met, uh, last month, and, uh, honestly, I don't, uh, remember if we met before or after, just without the, the days felt. But we did approve the, um, proposal on ten, uh, Beach Street, ten North Beach Street to add a patio covered, covered, uh, area, um, one-story covered area. And I do believe, and, and Mr. Perry, correct me if I'm wrong, um, uptown dwellings, uh, or construction have to be two stories, but because of the power lines and, and other logistical challenges, uh, HAPC recommended, and I'm sure BZA will take up the one-story versus two-story. But, uh, kudos to Mr. Perry and, and the team, as well as the, um, uh, the architect, probably one of the most receptive and, uh, well-represented, uh, proposals based on feedback and discussion with, um, the commission. So we were elated that, uh, uh, it went so smoothly.
Mr. Perry? Anything to report?
I will say, in response to Mr. Petherich's comments, there, there is a case for February. So we'll have to, you and I'll have to talk about how we slice and dice the, uh, where we might have a goal-setting session.
Okay.
As far as the OKI, uh, monthly meeting goes, which always corresponds with the same days planning commission, there were a couple riveting presentations of data today, um, from statisticians, demographers, and a statistician on crash data, which will really be beneficial. Uh, I think, uh, just looking at the overall, one was looking at the overall population trends, uh, in the region. There is population increase around us and within our community, and it's good to see over the past decade. Um, and so we can use that actually potentially in our goal-setting session.
Could you speak into the mic a little bit?
Sorry, yes. Um, there was a presentation today at OKI on, uh, population changes in the past decade across, uh, all kinds of spectrums and age groups, as well as new research on analyzing crash data and how that will be, uh, used for our applications for grants. And breaking it down on smaller-than-roke, road segments, because it was, and it was incorrectly being used before. And so they've got a new, uh, PhD statistician that is, is re-analyzing how that can be used for grant applicants. So we're looking forward to seeing how that will be done. So although it was very dry, we think it will be a, a more fair way of distributing funding in the future. Uh, so we're looking forward to seeing that.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, um, moving on, uh, item eight. New business would be, um, PC twenty twenty-two, ten, forty-one, forty-seven Kerr Road, preliminary subdivision here in Pond. Uh, this is for nine lots. Uh, you can find it on page four. Uh, Mr. Perry will set the presentation. So do I have a motion to adjourn to public session?
I shall move.
Mr. Dana with the motion?
Second.
Ms. Blackmore with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, Mr. Perry?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you. And I will say, Zachary Moore, our city planner, did all of the work on this, and he wasn't able to be with us tonight. So I'll be presenting, presenting on behalf of staff. I do want to say, um, just out of, in the spirit of transparency, I do live on Kerr Road, but I believe that I'm far enough away and doesn't have anything, doesn't have any bearing on this case, and I can, uh, fairly present this. Did let the applicant know that as well. So just wanted to get that on the record. You may be very familiar with this property, since in twenty twenty-one, there was, uh, a case that was approved and went on to city council and, and was approved as well. What's before you tonight is not a planned development, but it's a preliminary subdivision. And so it's important, before we go into this, kind of as a preface, is that the two are very different in the way that they are, uh, reviewed, because with a subdivision, it's typically referred to as a, as a straight process, or sometimes traditionally, even historically, is referred to as a by right application. So in other words, if you meet the design standards, then it pretty much has to be approved unless there's some kind of design flaw. Uh, whereas the, and that's what's before you tonight. The previous application that was, uh, presented and approved had a lot more discretion and negotiating power that the city would have, based on the fact that it's a plan, it was a planned development that was previously approved. So there is opportunity for, uh, back-and-forth discussion on architecture, density, uh, where open spaces might be, those types of things. So those are the key differences, uh, on those. That doesn't mean that there is not opportunity at all for, uh, some back-and-forth discussion, but there's just less than, um, than there would be with the planned development. So with that prelude, I'll go into it. Heron Pond, uh, so this is on behalf of, uh, HPCT Properties, Shane Kaufman, John Behr is the applicant. It's a four-and-a-half acre property on Kerr Road, zoned R one B. And I'll try to go through the history pretty fast, because this is probably the most, there's been the, I would say, of any post-war development in Oxford, this has had the most cases before the city that I know of, um, that, that we've had. So I'll go through these pretty quick, because I think you have all seen those in the past. So on Kerr Road there, um, in front of the cobblestone church area, uh, that you probably are all familiar with, there's, there's the four-and-a-half acre property there you can see on, uh, Kerr Road. It's been vacant for some time in the, in the red outline there, if you can see that. Zoning is R one B, and across the street is ag zoning or AOS, ag open space. So this is the comprehensive plan that's just about to get super, superseded. Uh, so traditional neighborhood, a neighborhood expansion area is how that was identified. And then the new comprehensive plan has urban neighborhood, uh, which is more trying to respect the grid type of pattern. So going back in history, this was the original plan, which did not get fully developed, but there's the, um, you can see the Morgan Circle site, which did get developed. And then, uh, that, there's the plat for that, uh, that was done in nineteen ninety-two. And then the South Farm Section Two, which did not get developed, but did get platted, uh, is adjacent to that to the west. And then the condition used for the church, which got, which got partially developed, then came about, uh, in two thousand and five. Then there's an amendment made, which, uh, scaled down the development a little bit. And maybe I went over that one just a little bit too fast, but you can see how the number of lots was decreased around the perimeter. So over time, uh, this might help explain for anyone watching or listening how, uh, this, what you see there was not the original intent. And then there's the amendment, that's fewer lots around it, and you can see those undeveloped lots, which now has been a, the South Farm development, which hasn't happened yet, but did get approved. The thoroughfare plan, and I will caution you, when you look at this line here, this is really zoomed in. So this is just showing kind of a point A to point B cross-town connection, which hasn't happened. So this is not the exact location where a road would be, but it's just zoomed in on the, on the thoroughfare plan or long-range transportation plan. And then in two thousand and seventeen, the city hired a consultant to identify a route for the Oxford area trail, and that's overlaid here. And that got put into the two thousand and twenty transportation plan, uh, which was adopted at that time. And this is the South Farm development, which I mentioned briefly a moment ago, that has the twenty-five single-family lots. And if you recall, uh, this is the one that had the, one side was rear-loaded, uh, with the alley, and the other side is, is the garage side. Good memory. I see heads nodding. And there's that one. And this is overlaid with South Farm and the previous two thousand and twenty-one approval, showing the private street and the fifteen, uh, lane dominiums. So a row along, uh, the front and a row along the back, and a private street connecting the driveway to the church and the, uh, road connecting to the existing, uh, public street, Robert's Drive. And so we have this labeled as an alternative, because the intent of the applicant is to do away with or void the previously approved planned development and replace it with a preliminary plat. And as far as the steps go, there'd be a preliminary plat, uh, if there was a recommendation for approval, that would go to city council. And then there would be a final plat that would come after that before any project could move forward. And the proposal here is, uh, nine single-family lots. Uh, this is R one B zoning, which, uh, by the zoning code would allow up to twenty-six dwelling units on the four-and-a-half acres. Hardly ever happens because of the, all the engineering that has to be done. But just to give you a sense, uh, and you could see that based on that, there were fifteen that were previously approved, so that kind of gives you a sense of what's the maximum allowed and what feasibly can happen with all of the engineering and plan that goes into it and the surrounding constraints of the site. Existing conditions, recent photos, as you can see. So on the upper left, uh, this is looking north, uh, along Kerr Road, and you can see the, the fence and existing cedar tree and, uh, the berm behind the fence and the very wide, uh, area in between. There's no curb gutter sidewalk here, it's more of a rural road section. Then on the lower left, uh, would be looking into the site toward the west. And then the lower right is looking east on the church driveway, out across the ag field across the street. And then the upper right is looking into Robert's Drive, uh, looking west. And you can see the, kind of the, what was the gateway entrance to the South Farm, uh, development. Aerial photo, uh, looking at the site, you can see some of the surrounding conditions and some of the vegetation. And this is the proposed preliminary plan or plat, uh, for the subdivision. And here you can see that, uh, there has been designed on the plat to have the, uh, Oxford area trail segment be built in with the project. There's also, uh, a si, a sub, a sidewalk along Kerr Road, and that was one of the requirements of city council when the planned development was approved, and that has been repeated with this plan as well. There have been meetings with city staff, and as a result of those meetings, uh, there were concerns expressed about access to Kerr Road as far as the number of access points. So the response to that, uh, which we appreciated, was to design in a fewer number of curb cuts by consolidating, uh, those into potentially shared driveways. There's the photo showing the sidewalk overlaid. And here we have highlighted what could be, uh, curb cuts that would be shared driveways, and we've got some photos showing what that might look like in the field. There is an interesting berm feature that was designed in, uh, with the subdivision, uh, that would be cutting across those. The lines you see on the map here are, uh, existing condition lines, they're not new grading lines, so you're not able to really see the reflection of what that would look like. There's an interesting feature of this, uh, because the church currently does not have any road frontage, uh, direct access. So in the process of obtaining the property, uh, when the owner acquired the property, the church gained an access easement to continue to be able to use that driveway. And, uh, what that did was then transfer the ownership to the current owner and then maintain the right for the driveway across that property, which is what is on a proposed lot for development. So the lot number nine, um, does have frontage, but in reality, the frontage would be, it has public street frontage on the lot, but in reality, the, the realistic frontage would be on this private driveway. Landscaping plan, uh, showing, uh, street trees and private trees, these are all meeting the code requirements. And you might have noticed in the staff report, one of our recommendations was to allow the, uh, city engineer or service department to decide where best those could be. This is not a typical urban street, because it's more of a rural section. And so city engineer was in agreement with that, just to allow discretion if needed. However, here they are shown along Kerr Road, consistent with requirements, and also along Robert's Drive. So Mr. Moore, in his, uh, creative skills, took the effort to draw these, uh, building footprints and driveways in a way that would make it a little bit easier if you kind of understand here. Uh, this is, this is, uh, an unusual situation, and we, uh, appreciate the fact that the, the designer and the owner are trying to come up with something that will allow them to move forward with a plan. Uh, they prefer not to go with the original approved plan, but a different plan. And so this is what that could potentially look like. This one shows, uh, not consolidated curb, curb cuts on Kerr Road, but it does show where a dwelling might sit if the current proposed plan were approved like it, like it is currently drawn. This is a photo showing, uh, more of a rural, uh, road section, uh, existing Oxford Riley Road. If you're familiar with the, um, middle school area, there on Oxford Riley Road, you can kind of get an idea where there is no curb and gutter, and there's a really wide right-of-way. This is what that might look like to have those individual curb cuts on a roadway that, in some respects, may have similar, uh, traffic count, kind of give you an idea. And this one shows, uh, where those building setbacks, uh, would be, uh, that they're compliant with that if those buildings were built right up to the setback lines. One thing I didn't point out earlier is the overall boundary of the plat is a little bit smaller uh, than the preliminary plan that was approved, because there is not a need with this proposal to have direct ass- access to Robert's Drive. So that section, uh, has been eliminated, therefore that eliminates the automatic extension of the trail. And so the boundary, uh, for that project would then be here. And we can come back to that. Uh, this was one of the other concepts that we do have in town. Uh, this, we have this already and I'll show you a photo on Brookville Road, where there's kind of a split from one shared driveway. And there's a photo of that. And if you're familiar with Brookville Road, you can kind of see how, um, the idea here was to limit the number of access points. The city doesn't have a separate access management policy, even though that was one of the things that did not get completed in the two thousand and eight comprehensive plan, uh, that we hope to still complete. And so the only access management policy that we have is the highway access management policy, we don't have our own separate one. However, that doesn't take away the city engineer's discretion, but it just doesn't give the guidance to be able to do that on a predictable, uh, way. There's a little bit different version. Actually, I think that's the same drawing as before, uh, showing the splits, just before and after the photo. This was a, uh, newer concept that we came up pretty, came up with pretty late in the game. And during the holiday season, we really didn't have a chance to sit down with, uh, the designer and the owner and kind of talk through these. But, uh, their decision was to go ahead with, uh, the application on schedule, and so that's why we're here tonight. So there's not been a whole lot of back and forth on these, uh, to their credit. However, we did want to show this to you as another idea we did float, uh, to them was to use the, uh, driveway, kind of like the private street was on the previous plan, to limit the number of curb cuts on the street. However, that would force the, um, that would force the, all of the access to be managed on that private driveway under that easement. That would put a lot of pressure on that private access. And it als- but it also would potentially retain that, um, natural, well, it's not natural, but the berm, uh, that kind of follows the design behind the fence. It wouldn't, it would not, uh, cut through that. This is actually outside the city, just to give you a little bit of context, if you go out, still go back at Road, um, and maybe even in some of the rural township subdivisions, you might have seen these private streets or frontage roads, uh, where the intent is to have one access point, just to kind of help to consolidate that, uh, for, that way the other roadway users are not having those interruptions. So that's that same shared driveway concept. Uh, this was another one, um, still would cut through the berm, uh, but it would, um, avoid the need for using the private driveway as a street. So I'll back up a little bit before I get into the recommendation. One of, probably the main, the main thing here is, uh, our belief is that this needs a little bit more work before it's ready to be approved. Um, which is why we have a recommendation in the staff report of tabling. Um, but our, our primary concern has to do with the difference between when it, when the approval was a plan development where all of the management of the access would be done by a homeowner association. Now that would be distributed to individual homeowners and primarily the owner of lot number nine would, would be owning this driveway that would be used by the church. Uh, and our belief is that there's a better way to do that, we're not quite sure what that would be yet. Uh, so we'd like to have a little bit more time spent, um, between, uh, the, potentially even the church and the owner, uh, and maybe even the city staff on working that out. So with that in mind, uh, our recommendation is to table. We also have some, um, if you, after discussion, feel like, no, this can be worked out between now and city council. Uh, we've got some conditions for that as well, that are in the staff report on, and some details on what that might look like. And we'd like to see those al- alternatives considered. Uh, we don't want to recommend denial because this is a subdivision application. And they have met the letter of the law, but we don't believe that they've met the spirit of the law, uh, which is in the general statement in the subdivision code that talks about the design. Uh, so since there are not decision criteria, we only have the general statement, uh, for that, uh, which we don't believe is strong enough for a denial, so we'd rather not go that route. And obviously there's more to hear from the applicant and, and the public and your own discussion. But that's kind of our overall position. And I'll be happy to answer any questions and then turn it over to the applicant or however you wish to handle it.
All right. At this point, if any commission members have any questions for Mr. Perry?
I have a question.
Mr. Dana?
On page ten of the staff recommendations, here says, there's a sentence that caught my attention that relates very much to what you've been talking about with respect to the spirit of the subdivision regulations. But I would like to look for a little more clarity as to the, the generic aspects. And the sentence I'm referring to in particular, I think is briefly reading, which is the one, "Staff believes the spirit of the subdivision regulations supports, uh, maintaining separation between the new residential lots and the existing means of access for the church." So what I'm seeking is more explanation as, as to what the spirit of the subdivision regulations is. Not just in this particular case, but in general, such that this individual case can be thrown against it at the wall and said, "Uh-huh, this doesn't meet the spirit of the written recommendations."
Great question. Uh, page thirteen has that general statement on there and I'm not going to read it for you. But I'll tell you, I'll give you a couple of examples, and, and sometimes stories help. So the main purpose of a public review of a private development is to make sure that the impacts on the public are either neutral or they're improved. And so we believe that there still remains a risk that the impact on the public could actually be worse if the access for any of these property owners, whether it be the church or any of the homeowners, would actually be worse than what it is now.
Would, would actually be?
Could, the, the access for the homeowners and the church could actually be affected in a more negative way than it is now. And so your job as planning commissioners is to make sure that in the process of a private development being re- uh, designed and approved, that it is done in a way where in the future, even if the current property owners and players are no longer part of the process or the ownership, that the future owners can still have the same or equal access and benefits, uh, that are, that are due them from the public services.
That is some degree denied or lessened by this particular proposal?
At this point, we don't believe it, it has, it has risen to the level of a recommendation of approval, but we believe that it could with some design changes.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? I mean, is that idea, when I think about the, is that your interpretation that denial is, that this has met the letter of the law? Because when I look at the purposes of the subdivision standards, it seems like one could make a case that does it convene, convenience to say streets create unusable lots, is it also possible that by reading the code, that a straight-up denial is on the table also, recognizing there's a right to subdivide? You know, and that there is a subdivision plan that would get them to be able to exert their rights. I guess, I guess it's, is, is denial also on the table?
Yes, it is. You would have to, I mean, you can cite the same facts, and with the proper amount of discussion, I think you can do that. But there's, there's, because there's not decision criteria, it just makes it more difficult. And so the city's at a little bit higher risk, uh, I think. So that's, that's kind of where we're at with that. We do need to update the subdivision code, I will admit that. Um, but, um, yeah, I'll just leave it at that.
Any other questions for Mr. Perry? All right, if there's no other questions for Mr. Perry, um, I will let the applicant come up and, um, present. And then from there, we will be able to ask them questions. I'm not sure who's representing you.
Good evening, Oxford Planning Commission. Uh, my name's John Baer with Baer Becker, one-ten South College Avenue. Uh, appreciate your time this evening in looking at this newest proposal for, uh, Heron Pond. As, uh, Sam mentioned, due to the holiday, uh, break in the middle, we didn't have as much time as we would have liked to normally interact with staff, uh, to get this fully ironed out before coming to you this evening. But I think that we've got some suggestions, maybe based on, uh, Zach's proposed, um, condition for approval. Uh, I think we have some slight modifications suggested to those that, um, to us seem momentable to everyone, but I would be interested to hear your input on those. So kind of, uh, I'm working through some of, uh, the staff report comments. Feel free to pause me at any moment if you have a question on one as I'm going through. Um, first item, the, uh, shared common driveway off of Kerr Road. Um, we've looked at that, uh, not the exact examples that were shown this evening, but we have looked at different options on our end to try and provide that single access, understanding the benefits of preserving the mound across the frontage. Uh, but at the end of the day, um, it's just not, uh, Mr. Kaufman's preference to build that combined driveway. A few negatives that we see, um, it does provide the most traffic passing by that individual lot where the access comes from. So I don't know if I can page back here, so. In this example, it would be lot five, um, has the traffic of each of the four neighbors passing by him, uh, which in our mind is a negative. The code in discussing, uh, minor collectors allows each driveway to access it individually, uh, but does provide some commentary that if possible driveway connections should be paired, uh, to reduce the number. I think by going from one driveway for each lot to pair driveways, we are meeting the intent of the code and kind of the suggested over and above level of the code there. Um, also the code goes on to mention that the maximum number of lots on a shared driveway is three. Um, so by going to four, we'd be going above what the code would permit, uh, to meet that requirement. I did discuss this item specifically with the city engineer, Scott Otto. Um, he said that he doesn't have any concerns with the paired driveways as it's shown. Um, he was good with, with the way that we had proposed it. Um, so again, our thought would be to retain it as shown on the preliminary plat and not include a condition for that, uh, approval. Condition number four, uh, which is discusses the construction of the Oats Trail path beyond the limits of the project. We believe, and as Sam alluded to early in his discussion, because this, uh, proposal was intended to meet the underlying zoning district and not a PUD-type process, uh, we feel that it's inappropriate to require that, um, improvements beyond the site limits uh, as part of the project. Um, if it were a sanitary sewer that was required to serve the project, we would understand that that would be a, a requirement. But we don't feel the code requires the construction of those off-site, uh, pathway improvements as part of the project. This opinion also matches the commentary that was provided by, uh, the South Farm HOA and their input on the project. Um, and then lastly, I do know that the city is actively working toward, um, constructing the Oats Trail through this area. Requests for qualifications have gone out to consultants to construct, to design this segment, uh, which in the wording includes verbiage for individual segments that haven't been constructed along the way. Uh, so from a timeline perspective, we don't see it as something that is going to be a gap in the sidewalk for thirty years kind of thing. Um, it appears that it's the city's intent to make this the next section that gets constructed. That's my understanding, the South Farm HOA is willing to grant that easement, so it seems like, um, the finalization of that missing link um, would be following shortly behind this development. Condition number five discusses the construction of the sidewalk improvements and path improvements before homes can begin. Uh, this is an item that we've talked about with prior projects in the city. It just doesn't make sense from a construction standpoint to build those kind of boundary improvements first and then build the homes. Leaves the sidewalks and paths up to a lot of damage with concrete trucks and other, uh, type of construction, extending utility services underneath the sidewalk to serve the homes, et cetera. The city's code does set up to where the sidewalks and paths are bonded, uh, the bond is put up before construction can begin, such that if the developer doesn't complete the sidewalks along the front, the city has the fiscal function to come back and install that sidewalk later. The money is there to do it. Uh, again, kind of eliminating the issue of there could be a gap in the sidewalk. Um, and then lastly, which I think is the most important item, is the access at the church cobblestone driveway. We're in agreement that it creates a bad situation, um, potentially having one homeowner being, um, saddled with the maintenance of that entire large driveway. And in maybe providing a little bit of clarity that, uh, Sam did in detail in his, uh, presentation, currently, the easement which covers the cobblestone driveway is, uh, written such that fifty percent of the cost of maintenance for that driveway belongs to the church. Fifty percent of the cost of maintenance for that driveway belongs to the owner of that property in perpetuity. The suggestion that we would like to make, um, to work around this issue would be to combine lots eight and nine, which is a suggestion that Zach made in his staff report. So lot eight would then have a paired access to Kerr Road with lot seven, as shown on the plans. So the lot eight at the northernmost end of the property would not use the cobblestone church driveway in any way. And then Mr. Kaufman would then work with the church. It's my understanding the church is, um, acceptable, this decision as well, to rework the wording of that easement prior to the development continuing to where the church would then take over one hundred percent of the maintenance of that driveway. Because with this new development, the church is the only user of the driveway. Uh, the shared maintenance made sense when the Heron Pond development used that as a primary access and emergency access. Uh, but it seems like reworking that to be a hundred percent on the onus of the church would be reasonable to then eliminate that burden from the homeowner of what is now lot eight. Right, right. So I think that covers the items. I know I had a lot of verbiage there, so I'm happy to go back to any of those items. Um, if you think a, an approval of those modifications might be reasonable. Um, like I said, we appreciate your time this evening, and we're here for any questions.
So you're proposing, so that I understand it, you're proposing combining, so there's not going to be nine lots or just be eight?
Uh, yeah, basically this plan here. But it wouldn't be a, a subdivision for the driveway, lot eight would just include the driveway all the way to that northern boundary.
Okay. So it's, okay.
I think they're still talking about the combined driveway.
Yeah, it wouldn't have that.
Right, it wouldn't have a single driveway. All right. But that's the general layout, and there is no lot nine?
Correct, correct.
All right.
Well, there still would be a lot nine. Well, who would own lot nine?
Lot nine and eight, nine would be completely combined into lot eight. So lot eight would go all the way from lot seven to the northern.
Underlying land would still be owned by the homeowner of lot eight. Yet the, the long-term maintenance arrangement would be with the church and it would be a right-of-way.
Right, we'd just re, we would just reword the easement to clarify that with the church.
Has there been any discussion with the church just to revert that portion of the property back to them, uh, as it looks that way? Because, um, Mr. Baer is pretty, uh, familiar with my love of the word perpetuity. Um, so that's, uh, Mr. Perry had pointed that out. It, it makes sense for those of us who will walk the earth for the next hundred years, but people who aren't born yet, those are the fun things we get to inherit in this town because the town's been around since eighteen eleven and there's a lot of agreements like this that are on the books that nobody knows about. So has there just been a, a thought of simplifying this?
Well, I think it, it kind of, on our end, I believe it would have complicated a little bit because of the reconfiguration.
Could you speak up to us a little bit, sir?
Yeah, I think the reconfiguration would be a little bit more complex because now we're, now we're doing another lot split. Uh, it would be a whole other process, right?
Well, and that leads to my second question is, you talked about, um, uh, services and construction outside of the boundary. Uh, and, and again, I'm going on fourteen months of memory here. You were going to build, in the original plot, you were going to build on property you didn't own. Is that correct?
Correct. The, uh, South Farm HOA was going to grant an easement through that area to build a driveway access. Through that.
All right. All right. Any other questions for the applicant before we open up for public comment?
I think there's, I did have one other comment. The the original design that we came in with last year during the approval process was when things skyrocketed. And just the cost, the construction cost of it was almost sixty thousand dollars a lot. So that's.
Sixty thousand of which?
Per lot.
Per lot, alright.
By the time all the, everything was done, built the way we ended up with the design that we all agreed on, it was over, it was almost sixty thousand dollars a lot, which just completely blows it apart. It's not even possible. I don't, I mean, the lot, the lot prices would have to be so high that nobody's gonna be there.
Thank you very much, John. Alright, at this point, we will entertain comments from the public on this agenda item. So if you're interested in speaking, please come up to the podium, identify yourself, state your address, please. Hi, John.
Hi Cory. Hello, Planning Commission. My name's John Johnson. I'm one of the elders and one of the staff pastors at Cobblestone Community Church. Had a little discussion before the the meeting tonight, and I've read Mr. Moore's staff report. Very informative. It looks like the two things, we were hoping that the owner of Lot Number Nine proposed would not share fifty percent of the of the upkeep on that lane. It's it's a lot of blacktop and very, very expensive.
Could you speak up just a little bit, sir?
Sure. Let me turn my hearing aids down just as I do that. Also, we're hoping to have an arrangement where if if we got snow or ice on the lane, sometimes we don't have to plow our tree, you know, if it's gonna melt before the next item on our schedule. So there's a couple of, well, lots of advantages to not having the landowner of proposed Lot Nine responsible for the upkeep of the, also that's that's a fifteen-year-old driveway and it's about, it's about due for some resurfacing. So I think if the easement is reworded and and that is transferred, our responsibility for the lane is transferred back to us, that solves at least the driveway problem. There'd be no other need for us to 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 negotiate or come up with other ideas from that standpoint.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Cory.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Good evening, Cory. It's nice to be in front of you all tonight and Happy New Year to you. I'm Mike Rudolph, Two Hundred Morgan Circle out in South Farm subdivision. We built the second home out there, so we've lived in that fine subdivision since nineteen ninety-three. As we had done previously in the past when both Heron Pond and South Farm Four came before this body as well as council, I'm here representing South Farm homeowners tonight to say that we are very much in favor of the applicant and the application that's being presented to you tonight. We have had many conversations with Mr. Kaufman as well as Mr. Shea, who's working on South Farm Four. We're very excited about their projects and in fact are more in excitement about this idea versus the fifteen homes that we had seen before. This tends to fit a little more in the same look that we have with the current South Farm homeowners program that we have back on Morgan Circle. So I'm here tonight just to say that we are very much in favor of this and look forward to working not only with you all, but with city council and also with the developer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm a co-potter, local realtor, appraiser, developer, whatever deals with real estate. We were the original, our company was the original developers that laid out Robert's Drive and Morgan Circle. And I would hope that Mike would attest to the fact that Morgan Circle's been a success. Number one, the proposal that's come before you does meet the letter of the law. Number two, with the modification of eliminating Lot Nine, I think it meets the spirit of the law. We will be representing the developer and the sale of these homes, and I think it will provide the community a affordable, some affordable housing for that demographic segment of the community. So I would recommend that you approve it with the modification of the elimination of Lot Nine. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Oh, sorry. No, I understand.
We're all set.
Oh, I thought there was a question.
Any other public comment? Alright, seeing none, I'll accept a motion to adjourn from public session. Mr. Dana with the motion. Ms. Blackford with the second. All those in favor? Any opposition? Alright, and just for the advocacy and reminder of folks, we truly inherited and and keep a tradition alive. We're gonna have a little bit of discussion before the motion, simply so that the motion is not convoluted, confusing. So we'll we'll actually have our discussion and then any motion will be more based off the consensus direction. Alright, so I will open the floor to my colleagues on the commission.
Well, I had a question that I think grew out of what Mr. Potter's words were toward the end. And I wonder if you'd be willing to repeat that. It had to do with the treatment of Lot Nine, and did you say the elimination? Okay, and that would provide a more equitable distribution. I just wondered if you'd comment on that a little bit.
Well, and just the easement aspect of it, I think that the city took some exception to that, saying that it would be a cleaner application of the law where the, if that lot did not have to use that easement. Is that the correct assessment? Sam?
Do you want me to comment or?
So as a point of clarification, Sam, if you wanna briefly comment for clarity, but just a point of order, we're a closed session right now.
Alright, well, that was my, excuse me, I didn't mean to go out of protocol. But my sort of perception was that the staff would rather that that access to Lot Nine did not go through that easement. Alright, so the elimination of Lot Nine allows it to have direct access and not have to use easement. So I, I, my interpretation was that that would then bring it into sort of the spirit of the law.
Thanks for clarifying, sir.
Yes, I'm in agreement.
So, of course, I wanna have whatever discussion everybody would like to have, but it feels to me like with Lot Nine being removed from this, that this is now a subdivision that should be passed.
I couldn't hear that.
That should be passed.
Yes.
Yes.
I was gonna say, that may be the case, but it would be nice to actually get drawings of what is planned. It'd be nice to figure out what's gonna go on with the easement if that's gonna be handed over. And obviously, at at least, all these things would need to be formally written in the stipulations required, so we have to figure out that. But I would like at least drawings of what it's supposed to look like and figure out what's going on with the easement.
Oops, the last thing I said.
To figure out what's going on with the easement since it might return to ownership of the church.
Okay.
Oh, I, no, I just, I, I, my understanding is that with the subdivision, we don't, we don't necessarily, we can't ask for those drawings. We can ask for the easement, or can we ask for those drawings?
We can, because with Lake, South Lake and all the ones over by US twenty-seven, we approved exact drawings of access, turnabouts, fire code access. If you remember, Mr. Keebler was our staunch advocate for how and where and why you can turn around a fire truck.
Okay, so we can ask for that access, okay.
Advocate for?
Mr. Keebler is our historic advocate for fire trucks turning around.
Right.
So.
Agreed, I understand.
Well, and and I think that's, again, this is not a legality, but just the spirit of things. It is our our charge and calling to, for lack of a better term, to yep a finished product for the council to review as opposed to conceptual what-ifs.
Well, and the prelimi, yeah, because the preliminary approval is ultimately if passed is kind of legally determined, it is done. So we have to, whatever we pass out has to be something we're comfortable living with as forever. So yeah, to ask for what we're finally approving at this phase is is reasonable.
And and I normally wait till the end and Mr. Bracken, I almost jumped in. I, what Mr. Berry said is is true with, you know, road designs and uses of roads and easements and right-of-ways. There's another caveat, though, whether it's codified or not, is that is where we will have multimodal transportation going through. So it reminds me of an example when I worked for a different state government. I worked in labor and somebody was only looking at the labor laws. They forgot to look at the Department of Education laws. So we have competing things and there may be kind of fine rules and accesses for roads, but we also have a multimodal trail going through there and and other conditions. So I'd like to see those things spelled out. Obviously, nothing that's out of code or permissible will be permitted, but to Mr. Bracken's point, I would like to see where the driveways are because discussions, at least for the last three years, I I remember discussions about the bike, not not the oats trail, but the bike lane outside of the gas station over on twenty-seven. So these are, these are very common things that are under the purview and that I think we have a duty to address. So if if a staff is working with the applicant, I would like to know where we have competing interests because I think if we only look at it in the vein of car traffic in and out of single parcels, well, it might make sense, but it also might create hazards. And if you think of Owl's Landing, we had discussions about berms, blind spots, and, you know, there's safety issues that may not be addressed in a DOT realm. So I I would really like to know those components too because.
So could you explain the processes, how would the staff, and what what's the timeline here for what the staff does? What what this body does, what the council does? I'm not clear of what that is.
So I don't necessarily know the timeline, Mr. Dana, but I I also feel it's appropriate for the applicant to, you know, Mr. Berry had mentioned no more than three dwellings are are per code. We also allow variance and and conditions that permit, I mean, we allow buildings to be closer to roads than the code says. So I mean, those are also things that I I think the applicant should have the opportunity to talk with Mr. Moore and Mr. Perry about, but also that there's more cohesive agreement and understanding of what is brought back to us because I know council, you know, we're the workhorses, but the work should be done here.
For what is loath, I I agree with just what you stated there regarding what the staffs could do in order to better prepare this. I agree with what you said.
Yeah, and conceptually, I mean personally, we had talked about a lot split. Mr. Perry, Ms. Rosenberg and I do those all the time, so, you know, I also don't think that would be too tough of a concept, so I just, I would like to flush out some more of the options.
Can I comment on that for a moment? I would like to see a good faith effort made. It sounds like there's some openness to considering a lot split consolidation. So and if if you decide to table and not approve tonight, I think I'd like to see maybe even a straw poll or a consideration of if that is important to you as a group, then maybe we can work on that with the applicant to evaluate the complexity and the cost of transferring, splitting that lot and giving it back to the church or selling it or whatever the case may be versus just rewriting the easement language. And if it's an administrative process that is just as complex or less than, to me, that is, there's a greater public interest there. Because then in the future, if there's an issue with that property, you always go to the tax record. Who owns this property? You know, and then someone goes knocking on the door of a homeowner and doesn't contact the church. It just doesn't have quite the public benefit as, I realize there's openness to rewriting the easement. That's great. I'd like to, if it's, if you are all in agreement, I'd like to see an effort made to primarily consider the ownership as the ultimate goal. But I realize there may be other things I'm not aware of that I could learn.
Well, and and not that this is per se my expertise or I'm giving advice, but from a legal and insurance perspective, the landowner is always responsible regardless of any agreements or rentals. There's always some level of perceived obligation.
So, oh, I see what you have.
Fortunately, we're not in public session, so.
So here's, here's my interpretation. Like, I I am a believer in in private property rights and and the zoning kind of defines what the rights are and and people have a right to subdivide. But I do feel like that doesn't mean that just because of subdivision plan provides access to houses that it's, this by per se has to be approved. You know, if you look at, we don't have decision standards, but but in the general statements of why we have a subdivision code, you know, it says it shall help ensure that convenient, safe streets, creation of usable lots, provision of space for public utilities, reservation of land for recreational uses, minimize the impact on natural resources, and ensure the planning of attractive, connected and functional neighborhoods shall be promoted, minimizing undesirable features of unplanned, unconnected, undirected and app hazard growth. They're not like decision standards, but you could, you know, they basically are, you know, that's the question. Does the subdivision do that? And so I I believe that people have rights, but you know, currently what's before us and and maybe in in modification could get there, convenient and safe streets. Like, hey, I have concerns about additional, you know, curb cuts onto the minor collector care road. I really think it's like a suboptimal situation from a subdivision point of view. I recognize this is a small parcel, but adding, and and even if you consolidate the driveways, you still have a shared driveway that potentially has cars ingress and egress from each one of those shared things. And so like from the subdivision point of view, I'm not saying like it's not workable, but it's not optimal from 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 what I think our code envisions. I I don't know what a better solution is, but we have what's in front of us. And then we have the creation of usable lots in the technical sense, but but absent some property conveyance with the church, I think it's a crazy situation. The idea that someone would own a piece of property that then right away, and then they would have to go over across the street with their mower to mow the park that's on the other side, like if if that, if there could be a split and the driveway could be owned by the church and maintained in, you know, continuity with the whole driveway, then I think it, you know, that makes sense to me, but any arrangement that's simply like someone would own and then there'd be this driveway, like it just, I don't think that's a usable lot from a long-term functionality point of view, but maybe that's.
So is there an issue of clarity?
Well, you know, like, so to me, I just say like the variations of this theme, like I, I'm not convinced it's, yeah, I'm not convinced it's approvable even with tabling and five-tin. I I think it could be, I mean, I think it's by interpretation, right, you know? I'm not willing to like say close the door on it and and go back to square one, but I do feel like those issues would really have to be worked out for me to consider this as something that meets the latter as well as the spirit of the subdivision code. So I've got some real concerns about, like, I think that this is not the vision of, you know, multiple curb cuts on what are ultimately, I mean, it's a minor collector now, but it's not gonna stay that way forever. It's just gonna get busier. And so when you show the examples, what we have on seven, seven thirty-two, I think that's crazy. Like, I just, I don't think that's what our con planner, subdivision code, envisions the way our growth should go. Especially since this was called traditional neighborhood development in the last plan, and again, called traditional neighborhood development, which I think is not, you know, what do they call them, strobes? It's like basically a road that grows into being a street or vice versa. So I have concerns. I I think that based on what I hear from other people that they're willing to work it through on the details, but I reserve judgment on whether it's actually approvable.
On whether what?
Whether it's approvable from my point of view under subdivision code, in terms of the latter as well.
And one thing, Mr. Perry, if you and Mr. Moore could explore, again, this is something that I just thought of, so I haven't had the chance to do some research, is the concept of a subdivision. Yes, it is subdividing a parcel, but it is also conceptually, at least in popular culture, a subdivision is self-contained or partially self-contained. And and this, one through four, I I'm okay, because it it actually adjoins and it's. And, and this, one through four, I, I'm okay, because it, it actually adjoins and it's, it's to Dr. Bertrich's point, it's off the collector. My concern with five through eight, and simply just because it's the line at the top, being involved in the transportation and the, the comp plan and things of that nature, this is also very close. I mentioned the Oates Trail earlier. It's very close to a potential crosstown relief road and booth road. So if that ever, again, you're, the blue line is just a reminder.
See that in the left part?
Uh, the potential of an east-west collector. At this point, Booth Road tees into Kerr, but all design plans for the region, transportation, relief, everything that we've seen calls for some rail crossing and some relief route there. So having, to Dr. Bertrich's point, having multiple driveways there. I had mentioned the Oates Trail earlier and I...
Having multiple driv- driveways?
With the Oates Trail, but then we would also have multiple driveways potentially within a football field or less, which is a stoppable measurement for, you know, safe within a potential collector road or, or a crossroad.
Well, good.
Is that?
That, I think, the most likely connection would be booth. That would be south of the property, but...
Yeah.
Okay, you're aware of that.
But stopping distance and things of that nature. I know it's twenty-five.
Oh, you mean proximity to the crossing?
Proximity to the crossing, yeah. Because I mean, if you think of like three hundred feet signal, things of that nature, stopping distance at certain speeds, it does fall pretty close if not within those.
I'm following you.
All right, any other comments? Anything we would like Mr. Perry to convey to Mr. Moore and clarify or work with the applicant on motion, table motion approved, any?
Yeah, so I was convinced definitely to get some more information, drawing some more specificity on the design. I'm not sure, I'm with Dave here on how it's not a good subdivision. I'd have to learn more about that and think about it, but at this time, I would recommend to table.
Should we, just, once we make the motion, the conversation ends, right? Or how's it?
Yeah, let's... The table, it does.
Yeah, motion to table. So we could have discussion ahead of that.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure before we say, I'm moving back, that if there's any last stuff, we wanna get it in before, you know?
Well, and point of clarification, she said she would recommend she did not make a motion.
And I'm not saying there's more stuff. I just wanna make sure before we do, we... Did, did, and did, was it a motion or is it, is there?
If, if, if we can have conversation.
If there's any other conversation, let's have it now and then I will...
Okay.
Speak now or forever hold your peace.
So do, do you have priority on the, the property versus easement? You were talking about a straw pole or something?
Yeah, I was asking if that was something of importance to you. Could you all let staff know? And if it's not, that's fine, but it would be helpful to know. That way, when it comes back, we can say we spent time on that or we didn't. And if you don't want us to spend time on it, we won't.
I, I'm okay saying, and I see Ms. Blackburn nodding, with yours and my discussions with a parcel on the north side of town that is twenty-eight acres landlocked on a, an agreement similar to this, I feel more comfortable exploring a more concrete divide or something of that nature as opposed to agreements and...
As opposed to?
The, uh, use agreements or access easement agreements.
Right, right.
Like, I'm more...
A more definitive.
Yes. Yeah, I would, I would say for me, a simple easement is, is an automatic no vote from the other subdivision to the staff. Because I think for, for the liability issues and everything, I think there needs to be separate ownership of this. And so to me, like if the, yeah, I would like to see that work, discuss the easement.
Me too.
Thank you.
Well, is, is Ms. Rosenberg's motion to table?
Yes, I do make a motion to table this. Yes, I do make a motion.
All right, and I second it.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second table. You can have discussion on that. You can have discussion on the motion.
Okay.
On the content of the business. So at that point, I think a voice vote to table is apropos. I, I have some nodding from the gentleman with the Juris Doctor, so all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the motion is tabled. Per process, it is tabled to the next meeting, which it could be brought off the table or left on the table. And just for the advocacy of everybody here, Mr. Perry, you'll work with the applicant.
But I, I simply want to add, if I may, a general comment about what's just occurred, which is, I, I simply wanted us to congratulate Mr. Perry on Mr. Moore, on what more than I've done to bring us to this point. Is that acceptable to you?
Yes, sir. All right. Yes, that was our only business item. So I will gleefully accept the motion to adjourn.
Do have it.
Mr. Dana with the motion?
Second.
Ms. Blackburn with the second. All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, thank you, folks. Dynamic duo. It's, it's the bookends, one and two, all day long.